Seven oh eight. Everybody stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, will ever be in justice. For all. Oh my goodness. Rory, did we receive any public comment?
We have not.
Is there anyone here for public comment? Public comment going twice. Public comment a third time. There is nobody here for public comment. On to item number four, approval of the minutes for the January twenty fourth, twenty twenty two special meeting. Can I have a motion? Motion by Pat Lombardi. I need a second.
A second.
Second by Trish, discussion. All in favor?
I.
Oppose? Abstain. Chair votes I. Motion carries four zero. Thank you. I need approval of the minutes for the January eleventh, twenty twenty two tax incentive subcommittee. Can I have a motion? Motion by Trish.
Second by Fred Stanek.
Second by Fred Stanek. Thank you. Discussion. All in favor? I. Oppose? Abstain. No, Pat Lombardi's abstention. Chair votes I. Motion carries three zero one. Thank you. Okay. Discussion and take possible action regarding the twenty twenty one Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame inductees. Chairman Stanek, would you please have the honor of reading the inductees?
If I may, Madam Chair, Madam First Select Woman, I'd like to read the entire motion if I, or entire resolution, if I may, into the record.
Yes, please.
Seymour Board of Select Persons Resolution honoring the class of two thousand twenty one inductees of the Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame. Whereas the Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame has been established to recognize outstanding athletes, coaches, and individuals who have graduated from Seymour High School or coached Seymour High School athletes. And whereas the Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame is inducting its class of two thousand twenty one members. And whereas the Seymour Board of Select Persons is proud to recognize the athletic accomplishments of the class of two thousand twenty one inductees to Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame and the contributions of the special recognition honoree. And whereas the members of the Seymour Board of Select Persons wish to join in recognizing and honoring the accomplishments of the class of two thousand twenty one inductees to the Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame and the two thousand twenty one special recognition honoree. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Seymour Board of Select Persons, hereby offer our sincerest congratulations and extend our very best wishes on this memorable occasion to the class of two thousand twenty one inductees of the Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame and to the special recognition honorees to wit, the inductees, Jim Teradyne, class of nineteen fifty nine, Jim Anderson, class of nineteen seventy two, Melissa Tomham Drawes, class of nineteen seventy four, Tim Renison, class of nineteen eighty three, Robert LaRoe, class of nineteen eighty four, Michael Mudry, class of nineteen ninety four, and the special recognitiony, recognition honoree Raymond Nekio, class of nineteen sixty six. They are Seymour, Connecticut, and adopted by the Seymour Board of Select Persons on this first day of February twenty twenty two. Seymour Board of Select Persons, our names are all listed to be signed by First Select Woman Marie and Marie Dragonis. I make a motion that the board adopt the resolution as read.
Second.
No, second. Motion by Fred Stanek. Second by Trish Danko. Discussion. All in favor?
Right.
Oppose? Abstain. Here votes I. Motion carries four zero zero. Thank you.
If I, if I may, there is a banquet scheduled for April. I forget the date. But Madam First Select Woman and any of us members might want to be present. We can read the resolution at the banquet. I've done this for the Board of Education in the past and present a folder with a copy to the inductees.
Yes, I plan on going. Soon as I, I know when I'm going.
Very good.
I'm going. I just need to know when it is. If every, if anybody else wants to go, we can get a table together, I guess.
I will be with, I will be there with you.
Okay.
Can, will someone share the date once we have it?
Yes.
No, thank you.
Um, okay. Item number six, discussion and take possible action regarding the updated CAVAN agreement. Rich, I know you and I discussed today and I will turn this over to you.
Thank you so much, Madam Select Woman. We're doing some work on this particular agreement. It, it is a significant agreement because it involves the Waste to Energy Project and it has a fairly long-term commitment to it. Uh, we have a number of questions and concerns and we need to have a further dialogue with people who drafted this agreement. We also want to hear from some of the other town attorneys from the other towns that are represented in this particular group. So with that, I would ask that this be carried over to the next meeting.
Motion to table.
Motion. Motion by Pat. Second by Trish. Discussion. All in favor?
I.
Oppose? Abstain. Chair votes I. Motion carries four zero. Thank you. All right, so we'll, Rory will put this on for the next agenda. On the next agenda. You. In your packet, you have the, um, the ordinances from the ordinance committee regarding the civil service. Let's look at the civil service first. Uh, Fred, do you want to speak on this one? Because it was you and I in, in the ordinance meeting.
My understanding, my understanding, Madam First Select Woman, is that the charter no longer establishes a civil service commission, so this ordinance should be repealed.
Okay. Do I have a motion to repeal the civil service, um, ordinance?
Salute.
Motion by Pat. Second by Trish. Discussion.
Well, if, if I may, Madam First Select Woman, I think we should have a formal repealer ordinance and act on that to repeal the ordinance. We, all, all we have on this is the, the civil service ordinance itself. So we should have, the, the ordinance, we have to have a repealer that follows the charter process in terms of repealing it.
What's the process, if I may ask?
The ordinance process. So, so you would have a written ordinance that is a repealer. It would be voted on and, you know, that, that, it follows all the requirements of the charter.
So someone on the ordinance committee has to write a repeal of it and then that's filed.
Once we, we, we can do that. I mean, it, it, it is a very brief, modest effort. I, we don't need to involve the ordinance committee. We could, in fact, uh, I'm thinking about this. Carry it over to the next agenda. We'll do a repealer ordinance and we'll get the thing started. I have a feeling Attorney Stanek was going to say that, the very same thing.
So you need a motion to table?
I think that would be appropriate. I, I, you had a good discussion in that no one thinks we need the civil service ordinance at this point because it is obsolete. So all you need is a simple repealer ordinance.
Okay, I'll make the motion to table till the next meeting.
Second.
On mute.
Second by Trish. Discussion.
Do we have to repeal our other, or do we have to repeal our other motions?
I don't think so because we, we, we made the motion and then we had a discussion on it.
Okay.
The most, yeah, the motion to table takes precedence. So you, you vote on that without discussion and then it.
See what happens when I try to follow Robert's rules?
I'll send you the latest edition.
I have like seven, okay?
Greg, did you have something to say?
If I may, it's my understanding, Mr. Counsel, that we will need to go to a public hearing on the repealer ordinance.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, we actually have to follow, we have to follow the formal ordinance process to do away with it. It's, it's not a, yes, it's an, it's an ordinance and, and therefore a legislative enactment of the community with some degree of permanence. So we have to follow the, the same process to modify it or eliminate it. And that's what we're going to do.
So if I may again, the next agenda item would be to take action on scheduling a public hearing to repeal the order, the civil service ordinance and act upon the repealer.
Yes, but wouldn't you do that at the next meeting?
At the next meeting.
Yes. Yeah, okay, we're on the same page.
All right, I'm just on the current, or what the agenda item would be.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, teenagers. Um, next on is the discussion and take possible action regarding, regarding the cannabis ordinance. Again, Mr. Stanek.
Again, Madam First Select Woman, if I may, we discussed ordinance prohibiting the smoking of tobacco products and cannabis products and the consumption of cannabis products on all property owned and under the control of the town Seymour and the smoking of cannabis products in the outdoor sections of restaurants within the town. And the committee is in favor of enacting such an ordinance.
Okay. Kind of a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Trish Danko.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Fred Stanek. Discussion. No discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Abst, uh, nays, opposed? Abstentions. Pat, did you vote?
I did. I said I.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you.
No.
All right, Chair, Chair votes I for, uh, four zero zero. Thank you. So the next thing is.
If I may.
Yep.
Do we not have to schedule a public hearing?
That was what I was going to say next.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were going to next agenda item. I apologize.
No. Next is to add to the agenda to set a public hearing for, uh, February fifteenth, twenty twenty two at six forty five on the cannabis, uh, ordinance.
Salute.
Motion by Trish. Second by Pat. Discussion. All in favor?
I.
Chair votes I. Motion carries four zero zero. Thank you. First Select Woman's report. I'm, I'm going to make this a short report. Um, it's been a very long two weeks. As you know, the Board of Ed at their meeting last week for their budget, um, made an announcement. They had a projected deficit. Once I heard of the projected deficit, I sent an email communication out to all board department heads and departments stating we are on a spending freeze. No excess overtime, no additional spendings should be done. I then sent a email out and I copied our Chair of Board of Finance, Bill Swicki on it, suggesting to our Superintendent Dr. Susan Compton to put a spending freeze in place. As you know, as a board, as the First Selectman, as our board, as a Board of Finance, we cannot tell the Board of Ed what to do with their money, how to spend their money, anything. And it was just a suggestion. Um, Dr. Compton did tell, um, her board last night that there is a spending freeze in place and they're to only buy what is needed. Um, with, with that said, we have to remember that even though we have a town budget and we have a Board of Ed budget, as of June thirtieth, that deficit, if there is a deficit, becomes our deficit. It becomes a taxpayers' deficit. And we need to work together and come together to fix any holes that there may potentially be. Fortunately, we won't know of any holes, um, until closer to the time. But we will get through this and we'll get through this together. As I stated, there is a spending freeze in place at both the town and at the Board of Ed level. Um, I did tell the Board of Ed in their meeting last night that we'll do this together, but I expect full transparency from them. And when they are asked a question, I do not wish to hear, we don't have to tell you. I asked for a complete listing of every item purchased with all their COVID money. And I did say, and Rory's probably going to kill me on this one, that if I don't have the list, I will FOI it. I know great reporters that like to FOI information. And I have great attorneys that will help me write an FOI request. Um, it's our duty as a board, as the leaders of the town, to share with the taxpayers where any money is spent, be it the public, public works, our fire departments, our police departments. They have a right. In turn, it is their money. It's not just our burden, it's a taxpayer's burden as well. Um, that's my soapbox on that. Because trust me, I live in town and I don't want the taxes to go up. Taxes go up, mail rate goes up, guess who else goes up? Mine. Um, what else? Getting ready for budget season, um, the Board of Ed has, goes up against Board of Finance or presents the Board of Finance tomorrow. The Board of, I mean, Mr. Stanek, uh, Select Person Stanek was there with me last night and, and he backed what I said to them as well. Um, the Board of, the Board of Ed did vote last night to push forth their six point nine percent budget. And the six point nine percent budget includes the potential deficit. Uh, money's in there. So I will be on that meeting tonight. I urge, um, our residents to listen to not just the Board of Finance, but every department so they can see how the money is spent and where the money goes. I've been working on our budget. I'll be presenting to our board, um, my budget prior to me presenting to the Board of Finance. I present on Monday, February twenty eighth. So I'll be presenting the budget to our board at our next meeting. Um, that's all I have for First Select Woman's report. May I have a motion to add to the agenda two items? One, um, no, one, just one item. Sorry, not two. One is Sheila O'Malley, our EDC Director is here, um, to give an update. I'd like to add her to the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Pat Lombardi. Second by Trish. Discussion. All in favor?
I.
Chair votes I. Motion carries four zero zero. Next, Sheila O'Malley, can you give us an update, please? Thank you. You're on mute.
Mute.
All right, got it. Thank you. Good evening, uh, First Select Woman Dragonis and members of the board. Just wanted to give you a brief, uh, update on my activities. Last month I had spoke about several grant opportunities, wanted to follow up on some of those and add a couple into the mix. Um, the first is the Connecticut Community Challenge Grant that we talked about. Um, we collectively made a decision that it would be in the best interest of Seymour to move forward with one application. And that application was the application that the COG, uh, submitted and the town of Seymour, uh, helped, um, and as well as the town of Beacon Falls, and that was for the Haynes property. Um, so we are hopeful that, uh, that that project and that grant application is successful. Lot of time and effort went into that, uh, long before I, I got on, uh, involved. And, um, I don't, I'm not sure when those announcements are coming out. I would imagine within the next couple of months. Uh, and that was again, a ten million dollar request for a road to open up all two hundred and twelve acre par, parcel of land, um, to create jobs, retail, and residential, uh, activity. So we will, um, I'll take that Connecticut Community Challenge Grant that I had prepared and, uh, perhaps maybe it'll fit somewhere else into the mix of grants as the opportunities, uh, present themselves. The second, um, opportunity I think that Seymour should take advantage of and, and I'll bring before this board when, when the time comes, uh, to ask for your support and permission is a opportunity through the United States Economic Development Administration. And that's to, um, uh, to secure some federal funding to help with the efforts on the Haynes property because that's a, that's a huge undertaking. While ten million dollars, uh, may help with the road, there's other infrastructure needs that this project will have. And, uh, I, I believe that Seymour should submit to EDA for federal funds as well. And, um, again, we'll, we'll talk more about that as the, as the time, uh, as the time presents itself, the grant opportunity presents itself. I did speak with Representative Clarida Stietria on the Small Town Economic Assistance Program, which I believe, um, what she had, uh, indicated to me was that OPM has not given a date as to when they're going to open that grant round again, but, uh, would like for Seymour to take advantage of that opportunity. I believe the max for the, for that grant is five hundred thousand. Um, but I may, I may not, that may not be, uh, entirely accurate. It may be more than that. But that's another grant that, that present, would present itself to Seymour and it, it's involves infrastructure, uh, improvements, economic development related improvements and community development related improvements. Um, there are, there are other grant opportunities for assessment for brownfield funds um, and the EPA remediation grant that the COG is submitting. I believe, uh, we would have some, some use for, for some of those funds as we look at some of the sites around town, around the town. Um, good news and bad news. The good news is I'm getting lots of inquiries and interest in Seymour for things like light industrial warehousing, uh, medical marijuana, um, uh, some, uh, smaller sized scale businesses looking for square feet that may be available in the town. And, and I'm trying to match, match that up with available resources that have been working, um, you know, really appreciate the efforts of the Fire Marshal, the Building Inspector, Rory Stephen, the First Select Woman. We've all been working collectively, looking at what's available in Seymour and what, uh, what could be made available. And that's, uh, something that I'll, I'll be talking about. I'll continue to talk about as we work towards creating future expansion opportunities for businesses. Uh, in the meantime, trying to figure out a way of, um, a way to, to make, to make, uh, more space for economic development. Um, and then, uh, we also talked about, you know, we've, we've been talking about ways to create excitement and enthusiasm in the downtown. And to that end, uh, I've discussed with, uh, the First Select Woman about a program that, uh, would involve a partnership between the Strand and the town. Um, and, and bringing businesses and showcasing businesses at the Strand Theater. Kind of calling it a showtime for Seymour and, and laying out a program of perhaps some incentive funds for, uh, through ARPA for, uh, grants, for grants or loans or, or revolving loan fund for businesses to attract and retain and expand the businesses you have downtown and throughout the town and sort of showcasing and highlighting, um, of these businesses through an event each month. Uh, maybe it's more than, more than once a month. Uh, she can showcase, you can bring seniors downtown. You can bring, uh, the youth perhaps, uh, a way, a way in which we can strengthen the, um, the downtown environment and bring people and showcase the businesses that are there and hopefully add some new businesses. So trying to, uh, coordinate all that and, and looking, uh, for this board's support with that effort as well. Um, and that's, that's what I have for you right now. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does any board member have any questions?
If, if I may, Madam First Select Woman, to Ms. O'Malley, Ms. O'Malley.
Yes.
I'm assuming you've met with Mr. Haynes or one of the Haynes representatives about the future, the new frontier.
Yes.
Has there been any discussion about types of businesses that you might be talking to? Might be chains or regional businesses to maybe be attracted to this area at, in a, on a timetable in the future, a year, two, three years down the road?
Ha, has there been any discussion with Mr. Haynes? Is that, is that what the question?
With Mr. Haynes to talk about, to start talking to businesses, maybe a chain or two that might be drawn here in two or three years?
Yes, we're, we're gonna hopefully coordinate efforts. We did have some, I did meet, uh, along with the First Select Woman and others, uh, with Mr. Haynes and spoke about some of the, some of the restaurants that, uh, that he's interested in attracting. Uh, spoke about the residential community that, that would be part of the project. And yeah, we, we will, um, of course, want to coordinate our efforts. And if there's anything that I can bring to the table, I certainly, and, and think it's, uh, appropriate for the, for his parcel, I certainly will bring it to, to him, bring those opportunities.
Thank you. I think that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Another question. All right. Thanks, Sheila, for the update.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next on the list is appointment. Okay, on our list of appointments, um, is Al Bruno, Deputy First Selectman, to reappointment for two years. Term expires twelve five twenty twenty three.
Salute.
Motion by Trish.
Seconded.
Second by Alan Bruno. Um, second by Pat Lombardi. All in favor? Chair votes I. Motion carries four zero. Mary McNellis Valley Transit District, uh, to reappointment for two years. Motion exp, expiration date is two one twenty twenty three.
Salute.
Motion by Trish.
Second.
Second by Fred. Discussion. All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries four zero. Ryan Mysteriac, Transportation Tech Advisory Committee. It's a reappointment, two years, two one twenty twenty three.
Salute.
Motion by Trish.
Seconded.
Second by Pat. Discussion. All in favor? Chair votes I. Motion carries four zero. Eric Wolf, Conservation Commission. It's an appointment for two years. Expiration date is two one twenty twenty three. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Pat. Second by Trish. Um, discussion. All in favor?
All right.
Chair votes I. Motion carries four zero. Uh, Board of Ed, uh, as they were added to your appointment is the Central Office Relocation Committee. Um, Fred Stanek, it's an appointment and the term is. And the term is, I don't, we didn't give it a term because we don't know how long it's gonna take.
Some of.
Motion by Trish. Second by Pat. Discussion. All in favor? Abstain.
I will abstain.
Motion, Chair votes aye, motion carries three, zero, one. Thank you. Um, Tim Connors, Central Office Relocation Committee.
Some of.
Motion by Trish.
Seconded.
Second by Pat. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries four zero one. Ed Stramello.
I'll nominate Ed Stramello.
Motion by Fred. Second by.
Seconded.
Pat, discussion. Motion carries four zero one. Remember, this is for the Central Office Relocation Committee. Peter Cubic.
So.
Motion by Pat, second by Trish. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion here, Trish Danker.
Make a motion to appoint Trish Danker to the committee.
Fred's, motion by Fred.
Seconded.
Second by Pat. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'll abstain.
Chair votes aye, motion carries three, zero, one. Thank you, I forgot to ask about that. Thank you. Tax refunds and abatements, if you can look through the package.
I'll make a motion to accept as presented.
Motion by Trish.
Seconded.
Second by Pat, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries four, zero, zero. Thank you. Did not see any transfers, thank God, in the packet. There's transfers, correspondence or none, public comments? Is there any public comments? Rory, did any public comment come in?
Not that I've received.
Public comment, no. Selectmen's comment will go on my screen. Pat Lombardi.
Most, I'm all set tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Trish.
Just want to mention that, um, Anne Marie, I support your comment that we do need to be transparent for the taxpayers. I'm a big proponent of that with the town. Certainly expect the Board of Education. You know, while we cannot dictate to them, I would hope that they have that same spirit of transparency with the taxpayers who are footing the bill for their budget. Um, and respecting however that pans out in the end to work through their budget um, as given to them and agreed to by the community. Uh, I guess time will tell what happens and, you know, where we can button up some things. Uh, but it is disappointing to hear and I'm hopeful that we will, we will figure it out in the end together. That's where I'm gonna leave that at this time, and that's really all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish. Mr. Stanek?
Thank you, if I may. As first select woman, Dragonis mentioned, both she and I were present at last night's Board of Education meeting. And in addition to Anne Marie's comments, I urge the board to quickly put together a deficit reduction plan. And I hope that the board will be able to do that within this budget year to, to eliminate the budget deficit this year. Of course, that creates another hole in next year's budget that has to be filled because the money wasn't available this year. But this year's deficit, in my opinion, needs to be addressed immediately and not wait until the end of the budget process.
Absolutely.
But also. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I spoke to Anne Marie some time ago about the possibility of our board creating some awards to community members. As some of you know, or most of you know, the Board of Education over the past twenty years has created four awards that it confers at its June meeting each year. The Blumber Award, the Cabeza Award, the Patruni Award and the Gallagher Award. And our deputy first selectman, Al Bruno, has been awarded the Gallagher Award for his contributions to athletics in town some years ago. I would like to propose that our board create two different awards to be conferred upon members of the public each year. One would be a community service award and a second would be a governmental service award. And we could establish criteria for the two awards and then decide when we would present those awards each year. We could name the awards in honor or memory of people who made contributions to our community. And I would just like to see if there's any sentiment in favor of creating such awards. The words simply would be recognition and a prep plaque presented, nothing monetary other than that.
I like the idea. I, I mean, we, we struggle today to get volunteers to begin with, not just at the municipal level, but any place who is run, I'm sure Pat sees the same at the fire department. So anything he can do to reward people who are spending their personal time, I could, I would support and get behind.
Absolutely, I, I, I agree wholeheartedly. Selecting Lombardi.
It's a very good idea and we should put our heads together and come up with some criteria for it and so on and so forth, but um, conceptually, very good idea.
If I may continue. If it's to this, if it's the consent of the board, I could put together a draft of criteria for both awards and then get the criteria that I at least draft to the other board members for additional input.
Good idea.
They lost time. Thanks, Fred.
Thanks, Fred. That's great. But will you present at the next board meeting?
If that's your desire.
It's, it's your time, whenever, whenever you can do it, we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Notion to adjourn.
Trish, second by Pat, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries four zero. Good night, everybody.
If I may.
Bye.
Make a comment. If I was still a member of the Board of Education, I would be not, we would not be adjourning for at least another two hours. So it's a pleasure to be a member of this board.
Why are on so other, so many other um, ad hoc committees, Fred? Careful how many times you say that.
But thank you. Thank you for the short meeting, madam, for selecting.
You're welcome. We like to keep our meetings short because we know we have to make it up on other boards.
Sure, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, all.